Well, Paul, the Monday, October 20th, a regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve the first few minutes of a meeting for public comment if people so desire and there's no one in the audience, so I'm assuming there's no public comment. So with that, we will move directly to Agenda Item 2, which is the Lane Livability Wrap-Up, and I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Thank you for having me back. So as you all recall, I came in April and gave you a pretty comprehensive overview of all of the tasks and the work.
If you'd rather than...
That was, oh yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Rearrange things here. All of the tasks that were currently, at that point in time, being completed. And so I can now report that every aspect of the Lane Livability Consortium under the HUD Sustainable Communities grant has been successfully completed. All of the reports and deliverables have been accepted by HUD. And we have published everything on this lovely website, lanelivability.org. And what I was hoping to do today was just to give you all a little bit of a tour of the website and the materials. Already, we see that much of this is being used by various agencies and various staff, community members, to support a number of different projects. So I'll just kind of quickly, kind of give you a quick tour. So, you know, there's three main sections. There's about the Lane Livability Consortium, and, you know, if there's a specific project that you want to learn about that took place under the Lane Livability Consortium, all of that information is provided here. The sort of most interesting component of the Liveability Lane website is the toolkit. And, let's see here. There we go. And so, and this was, what this toolkit does is it takes all of the reports that were developed through the website and combines it with other data and information and resources that were already available but scattered across a number of different websites and resources to try to pull it together into nine fairly cohesive sections. So there's the top three, Public Participation Strategies, Community and Regional Plans, Regional Data, and then you get down to some things that are a little bit more topic-specific, Tools for Balanced Decision-Making, Economic Prosperity, Equity and Opportunity, Community Resiliency, Healthy Communities, and Coalition Buildings. And all of these reflect pieces of work that were carried out as a part of the Lane Livability Consortium. So I'm going to focus on, I'm just going to kind of give you a tour of maybe four areas just to help you all have a sense of what is available. Under the Public Participation Strategies, we actually had a couple of staff people, Lorna Flormo from the city of Eugene, as well as Sarah Wilkinson from Lane County, spend a great deal of time kind of coming together around resources for public participation that can be used by anybody in the community, online tools, organizations, and other resources. So really kind of combining those local resources as well as state and national resources that might be of interest to folks and help them with whatever effort they're engaging in. Because we had a specific project on outreach to the Latino community as a part of the Lane Livability Consortium, we also built out a component on working with the Latino community. And so we took the report and broke it down into key issues, and then also provided other resources that may be helpful to folks that are, want to establish better engagement methods with Latino people. The Community and Regional Plans section is quite a large section of the, and this was one of the larger projects of the Lane Livability Consortium. And so some of you may recall the baseline assessment of plans that focused on plans as it relates to housing, economic development, transportation, and public health, community health. And so this section, you can see the sort of overview, and then you can see the sections on economic development, housing, community health, and transportation. And then we had a kind of other relevant plans, recognizing there are plans on many other topics, but we really didn't have the resources through this grant to build them out in the way that we did with those four key areas. Looking, so this is the overall report. As part of the report, there was a tremendous number of plan summaries that were completed. And so for anybody who's doing research on how to, on other plans, or understanding what's in current plans, this is a tremendous resource. If you kind of, if you go into economic development, for example, you can see that there's a list of economic development-related plans. There's the PDFs for all of them in one place, and then as well as a listing of agencies involved in economic development efforts.
Can you show a summary?
Sure. Let's see here. So one of the efforts, and this was an effort carried out by a team of graduate students through the Community Planning Workshop. So all of our plans are in different places, and they're different formats, and they, you know, there's not consistency in them because they're responding to different guidance, whether it's state, or federal, or local guidance. And so really, this was an effort to just say, okay, how can we create some kind of baseline comparison to understand these different reports? And so we, the students working with the Lane Livability Consortium members developed this list of credit categories and information, and that, and then looked at 60 or so plans to fill out essentially these forms. And these are now all available on the website. So in a, at a glance, you can get some pretty basic questions asked, answered, that sometimes are actually hard to find in the, in the plans themselves. Yes?
Are all the full documents on the site, and they're not links to other? The only reason I ask that, because a lot of times the links change on other sites and then...
Yep. So what you can see here is in the, there's a summary of all of them, and then full document. So there's PDF for some, and there's links for others. And so, you know, Envision Eugene is not finalized, so in this particular case, it's, it made more sense to provide a link. But yes.
How far back did you go? I mean, I didn't, some of those were dated, others weren't. And I mean, that's something I always look at, you know, especially if you're looking at like a prosperity plan. If it's from 1998, it's not going to have much validity.
Right. This was actually limited to current, you know, so it could be one that, yes, so it could be one that maybe was adopted 10 years ago, but is the most current, and the guidance that staff from that agency or others would look to at this point in time. There is also a state and local documents archive that is provided by the U of O. And so they are actually trying to collect documents in a comprehensive database, and that was a big part of this discussion as well, is how could we make sure that plans that are developed by different agencies actually end up in this archive? And so that was something that was talked about quite a bit in doing this work. And I think, you know, this is sort of the nature of current technology. I mean, everybody sort of started doing their own websites and just putting it out on the web and saying, okay, well, we no longer maybe need to kind of continue to turn... Back in May. And so, so Lane Livability Consortium is actually not staffed at this point in time. So, so that's just something I think that it's important to be aware of in the, in prioritizing the work of ElCog and considering how important this is to everybody. Yes?
One, one option, because you don't have resources, is if you had a, and it may be too late now, but maybe you could still put on a link to a, I don't know, I guess you'd call it a changes file, that the staff could go and edit and say, well, there's a new version of this file, go here. In other words, the website wouldn't change, but there'd be a file that would indicate that there were changes made in the underlying documents. And if someone wanted to look at that, you know, they could look at that text file and see that there would be some links in there. I mean, that's just the, one way that that's handled in the technology world, is you very often have a, you know, latest changes, and it just describes the changes, you know, one line, and, you know, that at least, at least tells somebody that there's a newer one. And it doesn't require that much work for the staff, you know, something changes six months from now, they could go in and just write, add a line to that. I mean, only the staff would be allowed to make those changes, but you'd have people from the agencies that would have permission to edit that file.
Yeah. I can share that feedback with ElCog. I do want to try to get through a couple more sections, and I have to leave right at 12 o'clock because I have to be at the Human Services Commission meeting at 12:15. So moving on, Regional Data. The, this was actually quite a comprehensive effort as well to establish and better understand what regional data is available. And so the, the categories of data that were surveyed and identified are described here. And so there's a sheet that provides this kind of level of information for every single one of these categories of information. And there was also, as part of this effort, a report on how could we establish a regional data platform? And so this is actually something that, there was a whole Data Advisory Committee established. And so there is a report with recommendations and next steps that is currently available. And I think some of the folks that are working on GIS issues and regional data issues at ElCog and at respective agencies are considering this. But even if you're just doing research for plan, it's a, it's a invaluable resource. The other section that I just wanted to jump to, to share with you guys, because I think there's quite a bit here that's applicable to your work, is the Equity and Opportunity Assessment. And so as part of this, we conducted 70, or created 70 maps across seven areas, and really looking at our region, so Eugene and Springfield and Coburg, the MPO boundary. And so if you were to just click on one of these, you would see the population maps that are available. And the purpose of these maps is really to show sort of the highs and lows for each issue and across the community. And so as you're reading them, it's, it's important to recognize that for a Latino population, the percentages in dark blue will be different than, for example, a population with a disability. So as you look at this, I always encourage folks, please look at the detail of it, make sure you look at the, this information over here, and read the text associated with the map. That'll provide a little bit more detailed information about the maps. And then, in addition to the maps, there was a very significant report that was established as part of this, and there were recommendations both by application and by issue area. And so the application areas we talked about were policy plans, public engagement, investments, and leveraging resources. And then the issue areas focused on health, housing and human services, economic development and workforce, and transportation and land use. And so clearly, we found that there were many, many opportunities to incorporate this data into different planning efforts and implementation efforts that are underway. So the last thing that I'll say is we did have a celebration event back in June that I think all of you were invited to come, and a couple of you I think were able to attend. And it was attended by Harriet Tregone, who is the new head of the HUD Office of Sustainable Communities. And I think it really was a tremendous opportunity to share with everybody what we have learned and to get some feedback from the national level. And the feedback that we've gotten has been incredibly positive. I mean, they were very impressed with the level and quality of work that we were able to achieve through this grant. They have been taking many of these pieces of work and sharing them with other grantees as examples of what regions can do. And so I think overall, the results of this grant have helped us both locally and also helped us as we're, as we think about applying for other national resources. So I'll just end there. Questions, comments? Do you want to add anything, Carolyn?
If there's time, I wonder if we could show them the report from the Franklin...
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
I just wanted to say, I think this is a really valuable resource. I wasn't really able to hear about this, and I'm excited about it. And I'm wondering what you think the Planning Commission's role is in having a voice or vocalizing the continuation or upkeep of this? You don't have to answer that today, but I'm just curious, can Planning Commission play a role, or...
I would kind of defer to Carolyn to...
Yeah, I, I think one of the challenges, as Stephanie noted earlier, is the grant funding is gone. It's done. And, but so much good work was accomplished, and the relationships kind of cross jurisdictionally and cross topics, topic areas, was really, really valuable. And so we've put together a recommendation for kind of what would be needed to continue this into the future. And I think it's something that each of the different jurisdictions has yet to kind of decide what, how it falls in their funding priorities. And so they have the information out, out there about kind of what would be the priority projects, how we would continue to work together, what the costs would be. And, but it's, it's, it's just putting it into the funding puzzle and seeing how it plays out. I think, you know, if the Planning Commission feels strongly about it, and you wanted to put together a memo or something like that, that's certainly something that we could, we could forward.
And I think I'd like to jump in too, and to add to what Commissioner Taylor was saying. It seems to me that if, you know, all this time, effort, and energy has gone into this, and yet if the grant funding is done, and there isn't any kind of funding to keep it updated, then it's just going to be another thing that basically kind of sits on the shelf and then becomes outdated, and then why did we do it? And I think it is a valuable tool, and I would just really, for one, would really encourage ElCog or whoever the funding source would come from to at least have enough funding to keep it fresh, keep it updated, and make sure that the information there is current. So Commissioner Borowski?
I guess a couple, one question, then a couple comments. I'll do the comments first. I think I agree. I mean, I'm looking at it and saying, it's kind of took all of the plans that were up on the shelf, read them, compiled them, and put them together. Now whether that's going to go back onto a different shelf, we don't know.
A digital shelf.
That's the comment. I guess the question I would have was, is there, was there anything that really jumped out when you, by compiling all of these different sets of datas, that, that rose to the top that was like, oh, we didn't really know this, or, you know, it surprised you, or it was, you know, an aha moment that came out of this? Just...
I mean, I think, I think there were a number of ahhs, and the executive summary of the baseline assessment of plans is a great sort of resource to, to look at some of those. You know, seeing just the number of plans, and I think also too, people might work in the transportation area and not really understand other areas, but as we are trying to become more sustainable, how to make interconnections among plans, you know, it's, it's something that's desired, but with the same amount of staffing, it's actually pretty hard to do if that information is not easily accessible to you. And so, so this was, you know, I think this helped to reveal the complexity of our planning and the issues and the inner relationships among those issues, and it revealed a lot of opportunities that are currently, you know, we're trying to take advantage of, but if you don't have resources like this, it's pretty hard to do that.
And then I, and I guess then the only thing to piggyback on that was, I would hope that, I mean, you're making a presentation to us, I would hope that there'd be presentations to staffs as well, you know, transportation staff, you know, just so that they know that it's out there, so that they can, they can utilize it, and whether that's through ElCog or whatever, but...
I've, I've found already that, well, so many staff were involved in the development of these, these products, that they have an understanding of the consortium and of the toolkit. And what I've found is word of mouth. You know, you got to check out these equity and opportunity maps, they're really amazing, you know, and so people are sending each other links and, and really using this as a resource. And Stephanie has made a presentation to the Planning Division, and the same kind of toolkit, so we know what's in there, and so when we should open it up to, to help us. Are there more plans for staff presentations?
You know, right now, I'm back to doing a completely different job, which is definitely more than full-time. So I'm not able to do that, except very selectively. And I think that part of what we tried to do with the event, and also with working with all of these different agencies, is to, you know, each agency had a liaison, they had a lead, we asked them to work with people within their own agencies. Carolyn's definitely done that, others have done that. And we have, we did do a lot of presentations in the course of the three years, and I keep running into people who say, oh, I'm, I work for Lane County Public Health, and I use this resource all the time. And so I think it is getting used. We, I did ask ElCog if they could try to get any sort of tracking data on the actual hits to the site, and they're looking into that and seeing if that's something that we could have access to. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think my hope would have been to have some kind of stability at the end of the grant, and part of it is just sort of where the jurisdictions are, the budgets, the, you know, and, and I think also too, just kind of needing to hear from folks that this is something that's valuable and worth maintaining, because it is, it doesn't feel particularly action-oriented, and, and so, but it, it really helps to support action, I think. So Carolyn wanted me to show you the, go back to the welcome, the, where is that? The Franklin Corridor Plan. Okay, I'll go on just one minute. So, so this was really, I would say, the most action-oriented piece of work that took place out of, as a part of the Lane Livability Consortium, and, and Robin was part of the team, and, and, it may not, it may not work.
Stalled.
It's stuck. Let's just see if the map will come up. So the focus really was on thinking about the Franklin Corridor as a whole, all the way from downtown Eugene, kind of through the university, through Springfield. And the effort was really intended to say, okay, if we think about this corridor as a whole, how can we think about planning for it as a whole? And so through that effort, it came together with Eugene, Springfield, Lane County, University of Oregon, and Lane Transit District, and resulted in a really comprehensive plan that I think has actually already influenced some of the conversations around eWeb, it's already influenced some of the conversations with U of O about future facilities, and I think has some, much, much more promise. It doesn't look like it's working. But, do you guys want to add on?
I just wanted to add briefly. A question came up, well, what's our role, and how do, how do we help move this forward? The Catalytic Project is one of those projects that actually does consider implementation and say, well, this, how are the jurisdictions going to work together to create something on the ground? And it, the Catalytic Project looked at that at the higher level, there's more work to be done on that, but the fact is, is it is something that's real, and it's, it's a project that I think, when you, when you consider all the different jurisdictions that were involved, and how previously we'd really been thinking kind of like this about pieces of that project, the Catalytic Project looks at it as a whole, and I think it's, it's opened a lot of, a lot of minds, and it's created kind of a buzz. In terms of implementation, this is, it's kind of a work plan issue, I don't know, that's part of it, as well as a funding issue. So I just want to throw out there that we might want to come back and talk about this in a little more detail, and, because I think it does fit, fit into other priorities and areas the Planning Commission is interested in getting involved in.
I would also just add that I think this planning effort really did a great job of, showing how the linkages between these issues play out when you're considering a specific area plan. And so Robin did a great presentation at the, at the convening in June, and the team had an interdisciplinary focus. And so I think the, the report is, is well worth looking at, and, you know, and certainly something that is worthwhile to think about in the future. Okay.
Okay. Well, I know Stephanie, you need to go. Commissioner Baker had a, I think a quick...
Yeah, just, just to suggest it again, I mean, obviously the thing is maintenance, and also making sure that, you know, links work and so forth. Maybe it would be, you worked with students from the university, didn't you?
Yes.
Maybe it would be possible to talk to professors there, and maybe get, you know, arrange, you know, a summer intern, or maybe somebody could do a special, you know, sometimes they have special...
Special studies.
Special studies project where they would take on updating, you know, I mean, you don't need, probably need as much resources to do that, than to develop it, but it's really important, because otherwise, the, the public, if they go to it and they find a lot of broken links, or, you know, click on it and nothing happens, and you don't know why, and the public's not going to figure that out, but a student would be excited enough to find out what's wrong and fix it, and, you know...
I'll pass those suggestions on to ElCog. They're currently hosting and managing the site, and so, so I'll pass that on.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Great. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Metro Plan Enabling Amendments and starting our work session. And this will be Carolyn to start and then Alyssa, so. Should we turn the lights down, Carolyn, anything?
Yeah, I think so. This, it's really just hard to see the screen without the lights off, so. I know it's a little dark, though.
It's in.
Time for Halloween. Sorry, John.
Yeah. So this PowerPoint I'm going to show you today is the, very similar to the PowerPoint that I gave to the City Council a couple of weeks ago, or back in September, when they first initiated the process to make these Metro Plan amendments. I had sent a link out to everybody to watch, but that day, the projector wasn't working, and so it would have been really hard for you to have, to have made heads or tails of that presentation. So I thought I'd do it for you today. And really, our hope is, you know, we have a public hearing and deliberations on Thursday. And our, our hope is to come out of Thursday with a shared recommendation from all of the joint planning commissions, because we have, we're on a pretty close timeframe than with our public hearing with the joint elected officials. So I'm hoping that today you'll get a really good, solid understanding of what those amendments are about, that we can address questions that you have, and so that we can go into Thursday really ready to, and poised to, to make a recommendation. I think we probably will recommend that we do deliberate jointly with all three bodies, which we have done in the past and, and we have not done it in the past. The last time we did with the Chapter Four amendments, we deliberated separately. And that can be easier, but it can also be difficult, because if we start, if one body starts tweaking with something and the other body doesn't, it's really hard to provide a consistent recommendation to the joint elected officials for them to come out with, because they're recommend, they're, they have to adopt the same package of amendments. We, there can't be any changes. So we thought it might be most productive to kind of have those deliberations jointly. So again, another reason why it's, it would be helpful to kind of understand your questions today, and hoping that we can move forward. I will say that there's been a tremendous amount of cross-jurisdictional collaboration on these amendments to date. Emily Jerome, who you know, is a former deputy city attorney and currently works with the local government law group. She was the primary author of these amendments. Actually, we were able to fund her through the Lain Livability Consortium. And, but all the jurisdictions had been very, very closely involved. Our attorneys had been closely involved, and we all are very much in agreement with these moving forward. So just wanted you to know that. So with that...
So Carolyn?
Yeah.
So if, if a planning commission makes some type of proposal to change some of the amendments or everything because of what this document is, does it then have to go back through councils, legal council again, for the different jurisdictions to be sounded?
Yes. I think that the, the staff from the various jurisdictions would have to look at it, their, their council would have to look at it and make a determination of whether or not we would recommend them moving forward with what the planning commission's recommendation was.
I think that would be good to, to talk about at the joint meeting.
Yeah.
So that everybody understands if changes are made, how, what, what could ultimately happen.
Yes, that's, that's a good suggestion. So, some of this will be a bit of review for you, but probably good for, for everybody to be on the same page. The Metro Plan, as you know, is our basic guiding land use policy document for the metro area. It provides broad policy direction and a blueprint for how we want to develop our metro area. All jurisdictions in Oregon are required to have a comprehensive plan, a land use plan that addresses allocations of land, policies related to housing, employment, parks, schools, transportation, and public facilities. And on a practical day-to-day basis, we use it as a broad policy document to guide local decision-making around zoning and code requirements. The Metro Plan currently works under the assumption that Eugene and Springfield share an urban growth boundary and a buildable land supply. The text throughout the document, the diagram, the policies, all assume one common metropolitan urban growth boundary and one common set of policies. However, in 2007, as you know, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 3337, which requires Eugene and Springfield to establish separate urban growth boundaries and therefore separate land use policies. So to comply with that law, the, the Metro Plan must be revised to enable the cities to take actions to adopt their own independent UGBs and policies. And that's the action we're talking about today. So just a little bit of context for you. Last year, the joint elected officials made amendments to Chapter Four of the Metro Plan, and that was following a planning commission recommendation. Those Chapter Four amendments were also required as a result of House Bill 3337, but they just focused on procedures for how to amend the Metro Plan in the future, specifically establishing new rules for determining which of the three governing bodies are required to participate in the various types of amendments. So the amendments we're here to discuss today are, in essence, a continuation of those Chapter Four amendments, in that they are required as a result of House Bill 3337, and they include revisions to really, I think, every chapter of the Metro Plan, which is why your packet for Thursday night is so thick. It is the entire text of the Metro Plan in redline version. However, I will make the statement that although they are throughout the Metro Plan, these, these amendments are policy neutral, so they are not affecting our current policies. We were made, we're very, very deliberate to stay away from that and really just make this about the ability to have our own, our own urban growth boundary and our own policies. And I'll talk about that a little bit more coming up here. Oh, wait, there's one more thing to talk about here. Also, last year, the joint elected officials decided to shrink the Metro Plan boundary on the east side of I-5. And again, that was following a public hearing and recommendation of the joint planning commissions. We do, and so you see that Metro Plan boundary, the green, is really not existent on the east side of I-5, and that's because the Metro Plan boundary is now coterminous with Springfield's urban growth boundary. We do anticipate that Lain County will have a similar request of Eugene for the west side of I-5, but that is not what we're here to talk about today, and that isn't, what we're talking about today doesn't have any implications on that discussion. That's a discussion for the future. Steve?
Yeah, this, this sort of answers a question I had too, because there was a place, I think it's page... Here it is. Page 175, where it says, included in the proposed Metro Plan amendment is a minor but important update of the Metro Plan diagram. Okay, and I just wasn't sure what that was. So is that just this change of coterminous?
No, but I will get to that in just a minute.
Okay, because I, that, because it wasn't explained anywhere what that was.
Okay, I will, I will explain that.
And it might have been useful to have some minor explanation in text.
So, okay, so what are we talking about in this current proposal? Basically, you can categorize the amendments into three different types of revisions. The first one is, are revisions to ensure that each city can independently of the other establish city-specific UGBs and policies. So as you know, as we have talked about a couple of times, and the, I think the last time was several months ago, but Eugene is working towards its own Eugene-specific comprehensive plan. And Phase One of that comprehensive plan will include all elements that are required for the establishment of Eugene's new urban growth boundary, so specifically policies around housing and economic development. So many of those policies currently reside in the Metro Plan. And so those policies will migrate over to our specific envisioned Eugene comprehensive plan, and similarly with Springfield's plan, which I don't think they call 2030 anymore, but that's beside the point. So those policies will migrate over, but not all policies will migrate over. So there will be this interim period of time where we're relying on the Metro Plan for some of our policies and on our own Eugene-specific comp plan for other policies. And the goal is eventually to have a Eugene comprehensive plan that stands on its own for all required elements, but in the meantime, we'll have to rely on both. And there will be future amendments as we establish our new comp plan that clarify in the Metro Plan what policies apply to Eugene and what policies don't apply to Eugene. So this is kind of going to be an evolutionary process. So here is the plan diagram change. So we did, to address Commissioner Baker's question, we did shrink the Metro Plan boundary on the east side of I-5. Basically, this plan reflects all amendments that have been made in the past, so we brought that up to date. But the only amendment, new amendment that we're proposing today is, did you see that little red circle fly in there? That's in the key, and I know you can't read it on here, but you've got a copy in your, in your map. And what it does is it adds to the legend a Springfield urban growth boundary, and then it clarifies a metropolitan urban growth boundary, which is what Eugene is using. And as you probably know, Eugene's urban growth boundary does encompass Springfield at this point in time. And so when we, when Eugene establishes its own urban growth boundary, the metropolitan urban growth boundary will go away and be replaced by Eugene urban growth boundary. So the only new change is really to that map legend. And there is a similar change then to the boundary map, which is the map that follows the diagram. Let's see.
So we still end up with 11 by 17 blob map?
Yes, for now, for now. We're, we are still working on that parcel-specific diagram. Heather's working hard at it. So the second type of revisions are revisions to update and add explanations of the past, current, and future status of the Metro Plan, including an explanation of the stages, or the stages of change that I just discussed. So basically, we want future readers and users to understand that the Metro Plan is in an interim stage and what it will be in the future. The third category of changes are to change or remove text that is obsolete and can no longer be applied due to a change in the law. And the primary example of this is references to the Boundary Commission, which was dissolved 10 years ago, and we never went through and made changes in the Metro Plan to delete those, even though they're absolutely obsolete now because it is no lo, no longer complies with state law. So we were very, very careful to only remove those policies which we cannot, which are no longer consistent with state law. We didn't use a lot of discretion in that. It was just like, is it still enabled by state law? No, then take it out. It's obsolete. So again, I would just stress that these are really policy-neutral amendments to the Metro Plan. So the future of regional planning. Although House Bill 3337 requires us to move away from shared land use planning, it does not put an end to regional planning. We'll continue to be required to do regional planning when it comes to transportation and public infrastructure and facilities, for example. And all, we also know that it is mutually beneficial to regionally plan on other topics like economic prosperity, parks and open space, hazard mitigation, and disaster emergency preparedness, as well as lobbying efforts for state and federal funds. And the Lain Livability Consortium is a perfect example. That was a regional planning grant that was awarded to us because we do regional planning. And the, but that is a definite priority of federal funding. So something that we want to continue to do. So basically, next steps are your public hearing and deliberations coming up on Thursday, at which point we'll provide a recommendation, hopefully a one consistent recommendation to our elected officials. And then November 10th, we have a joint public hearing scheduled with the joint elected officials. And I believe later in November, they're scheduled to take action. So we can turn the lights on now. Is that clear?
No. We know.
We got a packet this day.
Most of it doesn't change.
Commissioner Baker has a question.
Well, I mean, I just marked a few things. I'll just ask one or two and then let somebody else ask. First of all, I think this is really, I mean, it's a really outstanding job. I did find some places where the wording was not as clear as it could be. And also, I'll just mention, and I'll show an example later on, where it's, sometimes you just say UGB, and it, it'd be better if you said Eugene UGB or something.
Oh.
Because then makes it clear that it's not the Metro UGB in the interim or whatever, you know, because we have this interim. This, this is just a point, a question of curiosity. On page 14, this is nothing about the document itself, but as long as it popped up to me.
Yep.
I noticed the population west of I-5 keeps dropping from 2030 to 2035, and I just was curious, is that because of annex, I mean, what's going on there? Is that because it's getting added into the city of Eugene?
That would be my guess.
But, you know, it's sort of like...
A result of annexation.
I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't, you know, an act, an act, you know, an accidental mistake that somehow got transposed or something.
To Springfield's.
No, I, I think you're right. I think it's a result of annexation.
Yeah, but because normally everything else goes up every, you know, well, they do some, show something similar there. And let me throw out another place where I, and then I'll let, let somebody else comment because, well, there's two things here, but, so let's say on page 195...
9.7720.
So those are the code amendments that I'm going to be covering when, when you're done talking about the Metro Plan amendments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that would be an example of where, if you, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
Yeah, let's come back to that.
That is a, this is a big packet, and the second item begins on page 187. It's easy to get lost in this big packet.
Other questions from the commission at this point? Commissioner Borowski?
I'll be blunt and say a lot of this is a little bit higher level than I'm accustomed to. So with that, I would just ask staff's opinion. At the, at the workshop that we went through, the commissioners' workshop, one of the things that was stressed by one of the land use attorneys there was the, the importance of the findings and how well the findings are written, because that's, she said that that's where, she was a Luba, a Luba judge, and she was saying, that is the thing that they key on a lot up at Luba. So I'm just asking, do you feel confident in the findings that, that whoever put these forward? So I'm just asking, do you feel confident in the findings that whoever put these forward are, or have they changed much? Or just, I mean, that was something that was brought up, and I'm just hoping that...
I think that we feel confident with the findings. They were authored by Springfield staff, so we kind of divvied up tasks, but we reviewed them. I, boy, I'll knock on wood as I say this, we don't think these are controversial amendments, and so there's probably a high likelihood that they'll be appealed. I think for more controversial proposals, that would definitely be something that we would want to spend extra, extra energy on, but we've reviewed these and we think that they're, they're, they're good for this application.
All right. Commissioner Taylor.
Carolyn, I did receive the schedule, but can you kind of just explain this temporary period where both of them apply? How long do you think that will be?
It's an excellent question. It could be several years. And I think we will strive to have it be as small a period as possible, but there are a number of elements that need to be addressed. We're really just doing what has to be addressed in this first phase in order to establish the UGB. And so without having done our work planning for the next three years, I'm not exactly sure, but I would, I would say around that time.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Baker.
If we're working with two quote "Metro Plans" over this interim period, and I think we asked this question before, how's it decided which one trumps the other one? Or will that be obvious once we get all the amendments put together?
Whenever we add a new element to our Eugene-specific comprehensive plan, we will make a simultaneous amendment to the Metro Plan that says that those policies in the Metro Plan no longer apply.
And will they be physically removed from the document, or will they just say that...
Once both jurisdictions have established their own elements, then they will be removed. But because Eugene and Springfield are on different...
Different tracks.
Different tracks, we can't remove the policies until both jurisdictions are free of that, that specific element in the Metro Plan. And we have that all documented.
Commissioner Baker.
That was, my question was somewhat related too, is just, you know, we do a great, we tried to do as best a job we do with these changes here, but then we discover that something was missing. Do we have a work plan to revisit this in a year? In other words, do we have a plan to revisit this in a year and see if there are other small things that need to be adjusted, either because of Eugene or Springfield or Lane County? In other words, because you may not, this is, these are a lot of changes, and there may just be some things that were just missed by accident or were not anticipated or because of some things that Springfield is doing that, you know...
I imagine over the next three years, there will be a fair amount of attention paid to the Metro Plan as we, as we continue to migrate policies over and make, you know, we will be making amendments to this plan, I would say fairly frequently in the, in the next couple of years. So we'll have an opportunity to fix any, any mistakes we make along the way. But, boy, the amount of scrutiny this thing has gotten with all the different council and staff, I'm hoping we've, we've done a pretty good job.
Commissioner Jaworski.
There won't be another process like this based on what you said. In other words, when changes are extracted and they're to be removed, that's something that ElCog will just do when both cities say that?
Oh, no, no, no.
Any change required.
Would be just the same.
So then, basically, you'll be waiting for lump actions if it's this much trouble? In other words, you won't be doing every time something happens. You'll wait until you have a whole bunch of them that you both agree on, and then we'll have this process again.
It's always beneficial to, to be efficient when we're trying to get multiple jurisdictional bodies together. But I would say that because of the changes we've already made to Chapter 4, Springfield won't have to participate in, I think I could say, a majority of our Metro Plan amendments going forward. We will need to participate with Lane County in many situations. So that in itself will be a bit of an efficiency moving forward.
Commissioner Borowski.
Okay, then my next question would be, as far as the public hearing going forward, do you anticipate areas that will be addressed either by other jurisdictions or other interested parties that might be testifying that we might want to take note of?
This coming Thursday, you mean?
For this coming Thursday. I mean, has anything arisen that, you know, staff on everybody says, you know, we're pretty good on all of this, but, but this area might...
We, we haven't heard anything from, I know that the Springfield City Council has seen this. We haven't heard any concerns from them. We have sent notice to our interested parties like we always do. We haven't heard any interest. I had a personal conversation with Mia Nelson of Thousand Friends, just to give her a heads up, and she didn't seem too concerned about it, so. Well, you never know, but we're not anticipating anything, any concerns coming up at the public hearing.
All right. Thank you.
Going to knock on wood again.
That's probably a good idea. Well, do we want to move ahead to Alyssa unless there are other questions from the commission at this point? Alyssa?
Great, thank you. So there is a second public hearing on Thursday night, and that hearing will be on code amendments that will implement some Metro Plan amendments that many of you were involved with about a year ago. The council adopted, based on the Planning Commission's recommendations, the Chapter 4 amendments that Carolyn mentioned, and those...
Starts on page 187?
Yeah, 187 in your packet is where I believe the AIS starts. And so the Metro Plan amendments that happened about a year ago made changes to Chapter 4 of the Metro Plan, and that was really about Metro Plan procedures, who participates in an amendment and what's the process. So the code amendments that will be the subject to the hearing on Thursday night are taking those policies and putting them into each of the jurisdictions' codes, so implementation of those policies. The AIS kind of covered what the four areas of change are. We also took, as we like to do when it's a code amendment, make it in a better organizational format. I think after time, sometimes these get a little, little out of order, so we made sure that the organization made sense as well. Although it's a joint public hearing, I would note that the city is only making a recommendation, and then the council will ultimately take action, only on the city's code, so the part, the code that applies within the city limits. Lane County actually would adopt code amendments to the code that applies outside the city limits but inside the urban growth boundary, although the city of Eugene administers that code within those areas. We did work closely with Lane County and the city of Springfield in developing these code amendments. They're not identical in each code, just because our codes kind of read differently. They have, Springfield has their process, some process things in a different section, but they all follow the same flow, the same format. So with that, I'm just, I'm happy to take any questions you have about these.
Okay. I'll start, and then we'll go to Commissioner Baker. So on Thursday night then, for deliberations on the code amendments, that will be just us, or will it be us and Lane County?
Well, you know, that's a good question. I think we actually talked about having joint, because it doesn't make sense for Eugene to adopt a different procedures on how to amend the Metro Plan as compared to Springfield or Lane County. So ideally, we'd like to do it jointly.
With all three jurisdictions on both portions?
On all, there's actually like five codes being adopted, Springfield's, Eugene's, Lane County, and then those codes that apply with it between the city limits and the urban growth boundary on both sides.
Okay. All right, thanks. Commissioner Baker, then.
Should be fun.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Well, I just wanted to point out sort of, sort of an example of a case where I think that it's just not clear. Page 6, 9.7720, number 1. I mean, I know a lot of this is trying to take existing wording and reword it so that it's city-only rather than metropolitan. So it says, "Property owner amendment shall be filed in the planning office of Eugene if within the UGB, or with Lane County if outside the UGB." And I don't, you know, it's just not clear to me, well, I thought we were talking about, you know, there's areas that are within our UGB and then within the Metro Plan boundary, and it's not clear to me what that means, and it might be clear if you meant to say Eugene UGB, or because, I just don't know.
Well, yeah, this, I will say that when we worked with Springfield, so their code will say Springfield if within the UGB. The reason we left the Lane County reference was just to make it clear that although the city is a decision-maker to Metro Plan amendments outside the urban growth boundary, that they would need to go to Lane County to actually file that application.
Yeah. All I'm just saying is it would be clear, it's just because a lot of times you, we...
Noted.
To discuss metropolitan plan, you know, because there's this interim plan and all of, you know, so it's just, and that's not the only place like that, but there's some places like that where I think the language could be clarified. Just, you know, and then I had another question. Okay. Well, the second question related to this is, some of this stuff seems like it needs to be, all we did now is just reword things. But some of it seems like it needs some modification, updating, or potentially review, come back and look at it and see if it makes sense. I mean, for example, the next page, under D, 2, you know, D2.
Steve, what page are you on?
Page 196. The whole, the whole thing with, it seems to me that it, there's an issue here about someone applies and there's also a special area study going on at the same time, and then that can be waived and you can, you know, you can go ahead with the Metro Plan amendment even though there's a special area study with certain criteria. And it just seems to me that in some cases, some of that, that's an example of something that probably should be revisited to see if it's still applicable with what that wording says and if it still makes sense the way it's worded. I mean, obviously, it's existed in the, in the joint plan.
Right, that's current.
But, but the point is, if you're making our own, we might want to revisit that and, you know, get that to be a little...
Right, and I, just to note, when we do have a local comprehensive plan, our own city-specific, we will adopt, actually, or make sure that we, we will not be following these procedures. We will have new procedures or existing procedures for any change, to adopt that plan and any changes to that plan. So it will not follow the Metro Plan amendment procedures. And I will also note, we only change those things that were required to be changed because of the policy language.
And that was the attempt also to keep it policy neutral.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, and one last thing that would be on page 200, as long as I'm on that section. The thing about appeals to, adopted or denied Metro Plan amendments, that again, it seems to me, we've got this issue with Eugene...
Where are you?
Number 7 on page 1.
Okay, that's actually directly, I believe that's the exact language from the policy, so we just used that.
Right. I'm just, just again, just clarifying that that applies, you know, denied Metro Plan amendments, and again, it's, what are we talking about with a Metro Plan amendment? Is it UGB, Lane County, or whatever, you know?
I'm not sure I'm following your...
Yeah, so these are, these code are the Eugene code, so anything, these amendments...
Because none of this would apply to Springfield?
No, they will adopt very, very similar amendments, so, but if somebody comes in the door with, you know, an appeal here for Springfield, we're going to send them over there.
And the only part of this that would apply to Lane County would be the areas within the UGB that are not annexed.
Right. And that's the, that's why it's, I wasn't sure that it, what the application was, because of the complication of the, obviously Springfield doesn't have this issue because they have the co-terminus border.
It is complicated, absolutely.
So it's simpler, a lot of this stuff.
I think we're headed that way, too.
Right, because I don't know if there's, I don't know what Lane County does if it has an appeal to the planning, Lane County Commissioners first and then you appeal to it.
They will follow the same, I mean, all three jurisdictions will have very similar processes, and they'll each be in our own individual code.
Okay, and I just wasn't, wasn't clear on what their appeals process might be.
And I think that's why staff and everybody has been coordinating all of this to get to this point for the joint meeting.
Right.
Is so that we are all on the same page that way.
Yeah, and this is, actually, this comes straight from one of the revised policies, so, number 7 does.
I think Commissioner Jaworski was next, and then Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, maybe a fun item. I know the holidays in December are coming, so the red and green was interesting. The red was somewhat intimidating, but the green, the only question I have, I didn't understand the green.
It was usually places that had been moved. I was actually hoping it would get printed in black and white, so sorry.
Well, the green, the green was even more confusing to me, because some of the things crossed out were just crossed out. Some were crossed out with a single line under them, some were crossed out with double lines under them, and some of the new inserted material had double lines under, and I couldn't understand, at least in my, you know, was there any significance to whether they're single line, double line?
No. So the green with the double underline, that is stuff that was moved, and so that, that was existing that was moved elsewhere.
Even if it was crossed out?
Yes.
Okay, so double line means it's moved, okay.
Yes. Red in most cases means it's new. There are a couple where, for some reason, when we crossed out the green and tried to rewrite it, it didn't show quite the same, so.
So when it's moved, it, it doesn't state where it's moved to? We'll find that out.
Or where it moved from is the question.
Move from, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Taylor.
I just wanted to, actually, because with the understanding that we're looking at in terms of these Metro Plan amendments, it's specifically in the UGB. I actually think it adds confusion to put Eugene in front of UGB. It's basically how the current code reads, that if I'm looking at Eugene's code, it's called code. So I think to kind of address Commissioner Baker's concern, I mean, maybe it's clear, which actually, I'll look, in looking through it, it seems like there's consistency when it's Springfield, it's identified as Springfield, but when it's Lane County, it's not. But to start then identifying Eugene when you're looking in the Eugene code seems like it could potentially, I mean, I just like consistency, and I'm noticing if we were to change Eugene and put Eugene in front of it, it's, there's a lot of changes, including the map. I noticed that the map is just called UGB, Metropolitan UGB, and there's parentheticals that explain it. And Springfield UGB is called Springfield UGB. So I just wanted to give a different point of reference or context, because I think it's pretty inherent. If you're looking at a Eugene code, that needs reference.
Commissioner Borowski.
If you could just refresh me.
What page are you on?
Well, I'm on page 200 now, on the conflict resolution. I remember us going through, and that was the, was a bone of contention, who's going to decide, and is it the, is it the, so it ended up being the mayors of the cities, or the mayor of all three, if it was a three, type 1, type 2. I don't recall the six-month timeframe, was that something? You know, if, I, I just refreshed my memory, did that come in, or was that something that we had decided on at that last one?
Actually, glad you brought that up. So at, I can't remember if it happened at planning, must have happened at council, or they, or the joint electeds, they did not want to put any timelines. I know that there had been recommendations from some of the planning commissions to have processing timelines, and the joint elected officials said, "We don't want processing timelines. We don't want a deadline at the end when this amendment has to be done." So we have some, you'll see there's some, well, you know, you need to send referrals with... within twenty days, otherwise, you know, the city doesn't know when to send those and that doesn't affect the end part. When we got to the dispute resolution, they didn't, nobody gave timelines for that dispute resolution. So in talking with all three jurisdictions, we felt like there needed to be something, otherwise it could just be sat on forever and there would be no decision. So this is one thing that, you know, we definitely want to get feedback, is six months, the right, the right amount of time, um-
Okay. So it wasn't, it wasn't a decision that-
Nope.
-that had come out that I admit, that I had forgotten. This was, this was a substantial part that kind of we should be thinking about.
We just, we felt like there needed to be something added to this. I mean, we're trying to adhere to the, the joint elected officials to not add a processing timeline like there used to be in for, for plan amendments. But it seems like if, you know, if one of them's rising out of the, the weight of the dispute resolution, we don't want any one jurisdiction just to be able to sit on it and not, you know, for it never to be any resolution.
Okay. So then I guess, and with that being said, I've got some questions about that then. If, is, is, when does that six months start? Does that six months start when the mayors get it? Does that six months start when the, uh, application goes in? Uh, I, I need clarification on that because that, that would be helpful in, especially annoying process. You know, I mean, just, I mean, six months, just getting the stuff to, two or three elected officials and having them just get together and talk about it and then having their staffs take back and figure out what their recommendations are and then bring that back and then meeting again. I'm not sure six months is, is going to be an appropriate time for that, just-
Could be too short.
I think it might be too short. Um, I, but then again, that's where, where I would say input one from, from staffs and input two from, I, I think this should be risen to when it goes to council because they're going to be the ones that are making that decision. That should be brought up to them. Is this the appropriate time? Can, can you do something in six months? Because I don't know if, if three governing bodies can get anything done in six months, to be honest with you.
You'll, you'll notice in the crossed out-
And, and if that's the case, the default is a denial. Okay? So I would hate to see good projects being denied because you couldn't get the mayor and the board of commissioners together in a room.
Commissioner Jaworski, I think, did you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. My perspective, because I sat in that little room over there in Springfield and we went over this, and this was an issue, actually, I think this is too long, but that's okay. Uh, the issue here is that it's already been debated and things are going and it's only going to two people, the chair of the Lane, Lane, Lane and the, and the mayor. If two people can't look at an issue that they've already been following, that's been banged around and then finally sent to them because of a conflict in six months, I think something is wrong. So I think six months is plenty of time. If it had been the whole boards that have to look at it, I see an issue there in getting everybody together. But when it's only two people, I don't see that as being too short a time.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah. Um, I agree with Commissioner Borowski. I think it's, I wasn't involved in the initial discussions. It does seem like there could be, first of all, that, when does that clock start ticking? But then some kind of, um, opportunity for an extension under certain-
Okay.
-conditions, similar to a normal, uh, to some of the land use applications, that there's an opportunity for a timeline extension under, depending, who, first of all, who can request it and why or how, what it is.
Okay.
But I don't know the timeline. I guess I would defer to what's typical, I mean, it seems like you've done your homework, so that's all I would ask, is do you make sure you check in and find out what is with it? I, I do think it's nice to actually propose something instead of city council rather than with an educated kind of level of research rather than just having an open discussion. Yeah.
I think that, um, you know, there, there haven't been a lot of these, um, conflict resolutions and, and this is a brand new process, so it's kind of hard, hard for us to identify the right timeline and six months kind of felt like, eh, not too long, not too short, seems about right.
And it's only to bring back a recommendation, it's not to actually end the res, you know, the conflict. It's, here's what we think.
But I am intrigued with the notion of an extension. Um, and so we'll talk about that and see if, if that's something that we should add in and also identifying, you know, when does that six month clock start ticking?
Yeah, that's a good question.
And do you have access to other jurisdictions? So maybe we don't have the experience, but some of your contacts and other jurisdictions that might, just to be able to come to council and say, you know, we checked in with Portland, we checked in with-
So unusual.
It is.
We're, you know, we're the, the only regional comprehensive plan. I mean, metro's different because each city has its local cop plan, but I don't know how it shares.
Very unique that way.
And I guess I'll jump in and it seems to me, I, I tend to lean toward Commissioner Jaworski, that it seems like even under the type three, where you've got both mayors and the chair of the commission, you are, I mean, that's three people. And it seems like six months should be plenty of time to resolve that, I would think. And, and I think it's, it's a good, a good starting point for sure. And I think we do need to maybe, from the point of application for the conflict or whatever that is, to, for a starting time.
I think one of the reasons, and I can't remember this earlier conversation, that we put a little bit more time in there, because when Eugene's side, they were concerned that the mayor would be making the decision and they actually wanted the mayor to have a discussion with, with city council before bringing the, you know, their decision in the, in the smaller group. So I think it allowed time to, you know, if staff needed to do more research, if, um, they wanted to, to meet with their counselors, it allowed time for that to happen.
Commissioner Borowski?
Well, and, and the reason that I'm not sure six months is enough is because it's conflict resolution. So there is a conflict there. So there, the two bodies are not in agreement. So to, to bring people to, to conflict resolution, you know, I mean, at this way, if, if you're the person saying no, all you got to do is sit back and, and wait six months and, and you get your way. Right? And that's, that's, I mean, that's the pocket veto. You've got it, you've got it built right in. I don't have to listen to what you have to say, Commissioner. I'll just wait six months and it'll go my way. You know? So is that, you know, that's in the, in the person who's not in agreement with the, the amendments, that's in their pocket. So they've already got the upper hand in, in any kind of, of a, uh, conflict resolution. Do what I want to do or else I'll just take my ball and go away. And I win. So it, it is conflict resolution. It's not just meeting and coming to, you know, okay, let's, let's pass this amendment. It's trying to get something.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah. Uh, just, just two things. When I, when I look at this red, there was a question of when does it start? I think it's pretty clear to me that, that when it's referred to the chairs of both parties, that's when it starts. I think that's implied in the language. You wouldn't want to refer something to them and then say it starts seven months later. I mean, when they refer it over, that's the starting time. Secondly, this doesn't indicate to me that, that when it's sent to them, they're coming back with a recommendation. They're not coming back with a decision. They may have the decision or they may just come up and say, "Here's two or three options we want you to further explore." So the six months can go on and on with the governing bodies. This is not an end to, uh, an, an all thing. Uh, so I, I don't see that as an issue because it's not saying that they're making the decision. They're just coming back with recommendations.
I don't read it that way.
Well, they, they, presumably recommendations that they all agree on, I think is, is what your point is.
Well, they agree on is the two of them. If the two of them agree on something, they recommend that back. I don't see them saying, "We're saying that the, whatever it is should be approved, period." But they could. But I'm saying they don't have to, which is why I think that it's not that critical a thing because if, if they can't, they themselves, they can come back with options or other recommendations for further consideration. And there goes your timeline out more.
So it'd be referred back to the respective city council or county commission?
Yes.
Is that right?
Well, so a type two is, um, is a two-party, so it would be the mayor and the board chair.
But then when they make their decision in the conflict resolution, they would refer that back to city council and county commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Could their recommendation be to extend the timeline for more time?
That's what I'm saying. With options that they've looked at, with the attorney saying, "These are three or four things that we found that you didn't. Look at these again."
Have, have Emily look at that.
Yeah. I think you, we've identified an area that might be of concern. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I, I just was going to clarify that there's, there's two timelines. One, it's not discussed at all, you know, when someone applies for an amendment, how long does the process take before it gets to somewhere where it made a decision? We don't have any timeline specified in here now.
Intentionally.
Intentionally, intentionally, and that's fine. And that may, may speak to Commissioner Taylor's concern because again, if there's no timeline and you can, you know, there may be concern that you'd want a timeline or maybe concern you want a timeline, you won't be able to extend it or you, you want the flexibility, I mean, the, the, the bodies would like the flexibility, but the applicant may not want it to go on and, and ever. And then the issue with the pocket veto doesn't matter whether it's three months, six months or a year. If someone doesn't want to go that way, um, having the process just be longer on the books doesn't necessarily require anybody to be more cooperative than come to a, you know, an adjudication or a, so I, I don't really see that the, the length of time makes any difference from a, a veto standpoint. It just, so, you know, you should choose a time that seems reasonable, it seems to me, and, um, and, you know, and in that case, if the bodies can come back and recommend that, spend some more time on it by staff and we'll get a resolution, they could do that theoretically, so. They've made a recommendation back to their, their bodies to, that's in agreement, yeah.
Commissioner Taylor?
I, I guess, I mean, a lot of this discussion really comes down to what is the objective? You know, if the recommendation, if the intention is to have, I mean, it's kind of inherent when they say if the consensus isn't reached. If the intent is to have a recommendation that can move forward, that's one thing, but the recommendation, quite frankly, like you said, could be a timeline expansion, it could be a recommendation that really we can't come up with consensus and our recommendation is to have two decisions. I mean, it could be a whole plethora of things. So I, I think really the question I would have is what is the, what is the intent in the, in that time period? And how flexible do you want the recommendation to be? And, or do we not want to have it be specific? And I like the idea of time constraints just because it moves things, but there is that other piece, and if it's not, maybe it serves the interests. Fine. It's just how specific, what really is then, though. Yeah.
Commissioner Borowski?
Another concern that I have, and, and I may be reading it wrong, but, so let's take a scenario. You've got, an applicant comes, wants a metro plan amendment, type two, Eugene, Lane County. And- And they can't come, and it goes to the council, and they don't do a decision, or what, they decide, and they don't, and they're not, 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 and
know, if Lane County approved of something, but Eugene voted five-four not to it, it goes to this thing and the mayor can do something. Or even worse is if Eugene was four-four and the mayor said no to cause the conflict, can also do nothing and therefore have a denial and therefore get their vote. So it's kind of interesting. However, I'd like to follow this through. First of all, too bad, Robin, you only have 10 days to write all the findings. I think that's kind of interesting because finding-
I think they'd already be written, actually.
Okay, but they're tough, that's tough to do.
Yeah, it'd be part of the earlier part.
But I guess my question is, the decision of the planning director is final, okay. Is it still subject that this individual can appeal, or is there no appeal process on amendments like this?
It's final at the local level.
Right, so it still can be appealed?
Correct, which drops you down to number seven.
Number seven.
Okay. So I just want to throw that out when we're talking of timelines, that there still is an opportunities for appeal no matter what happens, and it's better to have that opportunity to appeal something within six, seven months than it is within three years you're waiting.
Other questions from commission or either related to this or other areas of the code? Commissioner Taylor?
I just want a logistical question, because as I was thinking about that, is there, is there a requirement, that's what I was relating, intent might be actually obvious in terms of law? Does there need to be consensus by all bodies, or could you have a recommendation, or the recommendations hybridized and then you bring it to the various commissioners? And let's say it wins, but the separate bodies vote on the recommendations, but the consensus doesn't have to be reached until the votes are cast. Does that make sense? And I can follow up with you afterward. Just, it's an interesting-
I don't think I follow.
I'll follow up afterwards, just because I don't want to take very much time. Okay.
Commissioner Jaworski?
I'll let this one go. I think we've, for me, I've raised the concerns that I had.
Appreciate what you guys have brought up, too.
And I guess the other question then, that what I would have is, this rang out because I didn't remember that six months. Are there other things in here like that that we should pay attention to that came up that have been added since we deliberated and put this forward?
You know, the only thing I can think of, and I'm, it's, I'm getting a little fuzzy between what happened at planning commission and JEO a year ago, but on page 196, under, right in the middle of the page, 9.7725, metro plan amendments, referral and public notice. I can't remember what you all recommended, but what it ultimately ended up happening at the joint elected process is that if the city initiates any one of those amendment types, we have to notify the other two jurisdictions, and they get to weigh in on whether or not it's the right type of amendment. And then if they disagree, then we actually go, shoot you to the conflict resolution process. And we did put a time because it seemed like you needed to, like, you know, if we initiate the amendment, we can't wait till the very last second to be like, oh, by the way, we did this and our hearing's tomorrow. So we said, okay, within 20 days of that initiation, we need to send that referral over to those other two governing bodies.
So you put the 20-day?
We put a 20-day, and I just couldn't remember what you all had talked about either, about the type.
I seem to recall that the planning commissions did recommend-
Was this theirs?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
Is that including the 90-day initiation as well on page 197?
197. Oh, you know what? No, the 90-day is, that's something that staff, you know, that's something, because the joint elected officials didn't want, you know, a deadline at the very end, we also didn't want one of the, you know, if it's a type two, for instance, we didn't want somebody to be able to just avoid scheduling any kind of public hearing on it if they, you know, weren't interested in it in the event some of the jurisdictions weren't getting along. So we just wanted to make sure that there was something to get the process going. It doesn't say when that hearing has to be, but you got to get it, you know, you got to get it on the schedule and keep that process going.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, just-
Okay. No, it's okay. You go ahead, so.
Because it says scheduled within 90 days, it's really not clear whether you mean the meeting has to be scheduled to occur within 90 days, or you have to schedule a meeting within this 90-day period.
Right.
So I just-
I struggled with that.
I know.
So it's just the wording, you know, it's an example of one of the wording things. So, and then I want to skip back to, I'm fine with leaving UGB, but I just want to clarify that right now, you know, the metro plan drawing shows metropolitan UGB and Springfield UGB, and it says metro plan boundary. Those are the three things that are defined. So it's confusing. That's why I'm saying it's confusing to me.
You would only be applying this code on the Eugene side, so-
So, right, yeah.
It would be the Eugene UGB, yeah.
Which doesn't, yeah, the metropolitan.
Metropolitan.
The Eugene portion of the metropolitan UGB.
Yeah, I mean, just, that's what's confusing about this interim period, the whole thing. So, I mean, because obviously eventually you're going to probably change it to Eugene, it'll be, there'll be Eugene, UGB, and metropolitan UGB.
I think most people that submit these type of applications probably just don't even look at that piece in the code. They just probably intuitively, okay, I'm in Eugene, I'm going to go to the Eugene planning office, and if they're wrong, we'll send them over to Springfield, or Lane County. There more questions?
One more.
Yeah, if we deliberate jointly, I guess what I'm trying to say, if we have some time left, is there any way, because I've, at least my first-time experience with the three groups getting together can be very interesting. So are there issues, as we just had some, that we feel we maybe can come a little closer together on here before, if we broach these subjects at a joint meeting, I don't think we'll ever get anywhere, just to be honest.
I would agree with that. There are other concerns.
All my questions so far have been resolved. I don't know how the others feel, so I don't intend to bring, to throw something into the fire at that meeting Thursday night. So I just wanted to mention that, you know.
And I think that is the purpose of this work session, is to get anything out on the table that we might have concerns about, so that that can be communicated before Thursday to make sure we can all be on the same page. So, Commissioner Duncan?
Now that we're there, I would like to ask, how do you see this going? Because we have two different hearings. We have a variety of deliberations that have to occur, because I assume when we get to the code, Eugene will deal with it, Springfield will deal with theirs, and the same for Lane County. Are we all going to chat about each other's at that point?
I think it would be a good idea because if, for instance, you all decide that the conflict resolution process needs more around it, the other jurisdictions actually need to have something similar in their code. So, I mean, it might even be best if we knew what we wanted to propose at that meeting. It would go a whole lot quicker.
I think if we had sort of a script of motions ahead of time, that might help. I'm only suggesting, but just so that everyone sort of sees where we're going and what has to be accomplished, so we're not just kind of winging it when we're there, because I agree with Commissioner Jaworski that there are times when commissioners just get way off track and try to sort of almost entice another commissioner from another jurisdiction to agree with them, even though it may not be substantive to what we're after. So I'd like us to be somewhat concerned about that.
I think that's a good suggestion. We are actually meeting with the other staff at 2:00 today to kind of script out how this will all go and your suggestions.
Can we get that script ahead of time?
I don't want that script ahead of time.
Oh.
Okay. No, I mean, we will provide-
I just meant as far as the process.
The chairs will have a script. Is that what you want to copy of?
No, no, what I was after is more, are we going to deal with, with-
Oh, okay.
You're wanting to know what issues have come up.
We're going to deliberate, we're going to make-
No, so we're going to hold the first public hearing on the enabling amendments to the metro plan and then hold, and close that, hopefully, and then hold the second public hearing, so on the code amendments, close that, deliberate on the metro plan enabling amendments, and then deliberate on the code amendments. That's the plan.
And I think what, let's see if I remember my train of thought now. I've lost it. Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
So my feeling on public hearings and deliberations is that it's an important process of the process. And so I don't want to go into a public hearing and with, you know, I mean, yes, it's complicated. It's three bodies that are going into it. But if it's, I don't want to say, I don't want to raise an issue because that's going to make this meeting last longer, or we're not going to be able to, you know, and for me, that's not, if that's the case, vote for it now, you know? I mean, a public hearing is to let us as planning commissioners and the public weigh in on what we think about this stuff. And if it's not right, deliberate and get it right. Don't just go the path of least resistance because it's easier. That's not, that's not why I'm coming to these meetings and reading these books. You know, I'm here to give my input, and if I think that something needs to be tweaked, I don't want to be dissuaded from that because it might make the process last longer.
I think you're right, and obviously, if issues come up in testimony at the public hearing, that the groups will want to deliberate about that. We don't in any way want to stifle that. I think what we would be after today is exactly what you provided us. I don't understand what's up with this six-month timeline. It gives us an opportunity to make a proposal at deliberations on Thursday that maybe the other bodies will kind of buy into and just streamline that process. So as much as possible, your concerns today, if we can get those out on the table, but you're right, you know, we have to obviously take into consideration all testimony and new issues that are brought up.
I remembered my train of thought. Will the other planning commissions, Springfield and Lane County, have a work session before Thursday also to raise concerns that they might have? And if so, can those be shared? I don't think that would subvert process at all, and I don't know what their schedules are like, but that might be helpful, just like if us, and I know you're meeting with them, too, so that would be helpful. Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I want to clarify, I agree with Commissioner Jaworski on the process. What I was more interested in is sort of the organization of the way the meeting flows from gavel to gavel. Because if we don't have that organization, we tend to be, have the process turn into herding cats and everybody heads in all different directions. And there's sometimes we've had some of these deliberations where we seem to go back and revisit issues that we've already voted on because somebody wanted to come up and say more. And I think it's just important to get the work done efficiently, however much time it takes, but do it in an organized fashion so we do get from gavel to gavel.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I, what I suggested was nothing to stifle deliberations. I was trying to get to where I think Carol just responded, where are some things we're going to throw onto the table so that we still, so that we can have a response from them before, rather than throwing them on the table for the first time when we're at this meeting? Unless, of course, some testimony is presented that's so unique that we throw it on the table for the first time. That's all I was trying to say, is let's introduce it now so that we can have staff respond, so that we've got it all.
And on the other hand on that is other commissioners, I might hear something from another commissioner, from another jurisdiction, that might make me look at something a certain way.
That's new.
And that's why I think it's important that we put our concern, not feel compelled not to put something out there because it might, you know, I might, I think I want to put out there, my mayor's not a voting member of our council. And so, you know, Springfield, is your mayor a voting member of your council? And we may have that agreement in our bylaws, do you have it in yours? You know, they may not have looked at that and thought about that, and they may want to, so.
Or we may need to clarify if our council's operating procedure is such that our mayor wouldn't be able to make that decision without going to council. And that, I think, is something you're going to check on and then, you know, but really can't be in this, I don't think.
I mean-
That aspect of it, I don't think really could be in this, but would be part of the way council runs their business, I think.
That kind of discussion's important in terms of incorporating that timeline.
Right.
Obviously, if somebody has a system that's more efficient, it can be shorter, whereas when there has to be more inclusion and approval.
So are there other issues to bring up? Commissioner Duncan?
As I revisit this over the next couple of days, is it still okay for us to send emails to staff and obviously see, see the rest of the planning commission if something else sort of raises its head that I haven't pulled out yet?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then just caution everyone not to get into deliberations via email, but certainly communicating that, I don't think-
Questions, clear questions, we'll provide.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
I just wanted to comment, too, from the last time we did this, things pop out from the other commissions that were completely, you know, we never discussed, either we didn't think were important or we never, you know, they, so that's to be expected, I think, that you're going to get some surprising comments that we, you know, would, you know, we didn't think were important in our deliberations, but to them, they think are very important. So you have to accommodate that because that's the reality. And they have to accommodate ours because they may, they may be completely unconcerned about this. I mean, we spent, I don't know how much time we spent on conflict resolution, right? This one, one section on conflict, and they may, you know, God, if you haven't decided it by the Lane County commissioners, you know, what do we worry about? If they can't decide and it goes up in the air, then, you know.
And I think, too, just having it clear during those times who's actually running the meeting and all that, if it'll be the chair of Springfield or how that all works, so that as we're all in that process, that would be helpful.
It will be the Springfield chair.
It will be Springfield.
That would make sense, yeah. So, Commissioner Jaworski?
Okay, one other thing, and you might be able to help me out with this. So if we get onto the findings on page 214 at the top of the thing, the goal six finding, this was, it just says that there's a state-wide planning goal does not apply, and it has to do with pollution and air and storm waters and stuff like that. And I recall us talking about, you know, the fact, you know, now we're separating these UGBs, and we came to the consensus that it was the facility plans that would be the only ones that would overlap. I'm just, can you explain to me how a, a decision to build something on our side of the UGB that is an emitter, that goes across jurisdictional lines, has absolutely no, you know, is this finding going to hold up?
Well, this finding is only to change the code to implement the metro plan amendment procedure. So that's, this particular finding only applies to that.
Okay. So then is, and then going back to Carolyn in the first section, is the finding strong enough on that one? And I didn't, I didn't see where that was in the big first section.
I think that you would want to look at the findings that we did for the chapter four metro plan amendments, the ones we already-
The ones we did, yeah.
I think that's what you're getting at.
Well, and that's, because I mean, I remember us having a fairly robust discussion about that, and then I just, I just wanted to make sure, again, the findings are important, so. And I don't know if I was really swayed on that in the last part, you know, that something we do here won't have an effect, especially with stuff that drifts.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the findings for goal six.
So page 181.
181. Because, because of the nature of these enabling amendments, I don't see this as an issue. Because we're really just talking about the ability to form our own urban growth boundaries and our own land use policies. We're not changing any of the policies that exist.
Yeah, because we already changed the- Yeah, because we already changed the, the last one, the section code for that we amended.
But none of those are part of, so there's a, a section in the metro plan that actually addresses water, air, and what else? What is Goal 6?
Air and water and land resources.
Land resources. So by simply changing our procedures or making some of these neutral code amendments, we're not, we haven't changed those policies or any of our regulations.
Okay.
Okay.
Good questions.
Well, thank you, Carolyn and Alyssa.
Thank you. This is very helpful.
Appreciate that. And with that, the hearing Thursday night is 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock.
Seven, City of Springfield Library room.
Okay.
Yeah.
And dinner is not provided.
Correct.
So eat first. We'll see you then.
Was that the same room that we were in last time?
I think so. So any other items from staff?
Just a reminder that we're talking to council on Wednesday. Just giving them an update on the South Willamette Concept Plan and all the work you've put into that so far. And Commissioner Randall will be joining us and will be coordinating how that's going to work out. But essentially, we're just checking in and saying, hey, remember, this project has been going on for a while. It'll be coming to you probably in the spring. And just help share some of the highlights from all the extensive public process and discussion that's happened up to date. So pretty straightforward. Give them a little, to the extent that we can, in a 10-minute presentation, a little bit of insight into the, some of the conversations that we've had about the concepts in the code.
Okay. Any items from commission? Okay. Well, with that, we're adjourned.